Good evening and welcome to the May twenty three, twenty twenty three meeting of the Stowe Select Board. In the room tonight, we have Ingleboro Haggman Clark, Courtney Fresha, myself, Hector Castanzas, and we would like to welcome our newest board member JT Tool, who was elected on Saturday. And I was also reelected on Saturday, so I'll be here for three more years. So, welcome and congratulations. So we're now at the point in, um, in the yearly board where we reorganize. And so I have served as chair for the last year. Um, and I think Ellen was the clerk. And so what we tend to do now is, um, ask, or I will ask for a nomination for someone to be the new chair. We can discuss it and then we can take a vote. So in the interest of moving right along, I will take a motion for anyone to be the new chair.
Well, I recall a last year that you and Courtney were both interested.
Yes.
And if she's still interested, I would like to nominate Courtney
Okay.
to be the chair of the select board for the coming year ending after the twenty twenty four annual town election.
Okay, excellent.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, does anyone have any further discussion?
No.
I would assume you'll be interested in it again.
I accept.
Fantastic. Um, well, seeing no further discussion, then I will take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You can vote for yourself.
Aye.
So it's unanimous, uh, would you like to lead the meeting?
Well, I like to, I thought you said leave from.
Would you like to lead the meeting? Would you like to leave the meeting? Okay, great, I'm gonna switch seats to you.
You don't need to switch tonight, we'll rearrange for next week.
Okay, great then.
But I do wanna say that you've been a wonderful chair.
Oh, thanks, Ingleboro.
Thoroughly enjoyed
I appreciate it.
your leadership.
Oh.
In some controversial hearings and you always kept us good, I just wanna thank you.
Thank you.
I think you worked really hard.
And I learned a lot from you because
Yeah.
Thanks guys.
Thank you.
I'll be sitting here for three more years, so. So you need to nominate a clerk.
Yes, so the clerk's responsibilities, if I remember correctly, are, um, see, they used to be to take minutes if no one else was available to do so, um, which is unlikely. And they would chair the meeting if the chair is unavailable. So, um, do I hear any nominations for clerk?
I'll jump in at once.
Yeah, really?
Going down.
Um, I, Hector, are you interested in being clerk?
All I get to do is sit here and
Uh, but you'll have to chair a meeting.
You, you would have to chair, be able to chair a meeting if there's, if Courtney's not here.
Or does it make sense that the former chair be the clerk?
I, we've done it that way before, but I don't either way, it doesn't matter.
Sometimes the new person is the clerk, I was, I was clerk when I first got on the court, so could
Yes, oh, you were the clerk too, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sure, I do anyway.
Or Ingleboro, I don't know, is that an interest?
Not this year, I've got so much to do.
Still class and stuff.
Yeah.
Would you like to be the clerk since you've got the experience in case?
I'm happy, I'm happy to do it if needed.
Then I'll nominate Megan as clerk.
Sorry.
Fantastic.
Oh, you'll be the clerk next year then, we remember.
Uh, any further discussion of that?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I will vote for myself.
Aye. That is unanimous.
Okay.
Um, all right, do we have anyone that would like to make public, public comment tonight? We typically would limit it to two minutes. And please state your name and address, um, prior to your comments. Uh, Dorothy?
Hi, it's Dorothy Granite, eleven Mike Pond Road. And, um, I would like to congratulate the new member and congratulate the returning member first. Um, I had mentioned before that I felt following Representative Hogan's recommendations for developing a committee or working group that had all vested interests um, in regards to water from the lower village area. And I still feel that there should be more of an open access to information and to have people of different areas to have input. The map up that I have in my profile picture shows what was voted on in the Conservation Committee, which is the outline, um, outlining wellheads um, onto property that's owned by someone that I've also found it frustrating that the town has not supported the zoning Board of Appeals information in court. And so that map and what was said in the Conservation Committee points that, um, that property owner will be given water. And having those on his property would have either him or the town be in control of the water. So it's just something I'm hoping that more information would be given out.
I think it's, so Dorothy, can you be more specific about the location of this map?
It's, we, we shouldn't engage during public.
Uh, that's right, um, so actually, um, we will
I'll send something in writing, thank you for listening.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay.
Thanks for your comment. Let's see, is there any other public comment this evening?
No one else has raised their hand.
Okay. Um, are there comments from the board members?
No.
Silence.
Silence.
Okay. Um, how about the town administrator? Do you have a report for us?
Uh, just a few things, um, I know we will talk about the town meeting debrief in a bit, but I just wanted to thank everyone again who worked behind the scenes, putting on the annual town meeting. Um, I won't go into naming everybody, um, but I did submit a letter to last week's over the fence post recognizing and thanking everyone that participated. So thank you to everybody, it, it actually takes a quite, quite a bit of work. Uh, we'll, we'll talk about it later, that, um, we had some feedback that, um, you know, the sound didn't work at times, the clickers didn't work, but we had tested and set everything up multiple times until you put two hundred people in the room to cause interference, you just can't test everything, so, um, we'll continue to improve on that, but I just wanted folks to know that things were tested multiple times before the day of town meeting. Um, just to let the board know, tonight on your agenda, you have the Nishoba Regional High School Building Project update, that has been canceled, um, they are not ready to come in this evening. So they will be back on your normal schedule at the next meeting, the thirteenth, I think, so they're on there already. Um, and then just finally, just to let the board know, I'm gonna take a couple days off around the holiday this weekend. And I will be away June first and second at the Mass Municipal Managers, Managers Conference. Um, so just to make you aware that I will not be in the office. So that's it.
Great.
Okay. Um, so now we have recognitions. Hector, would you like to speak to the next, um, item on our agenda?
Certainly, um, I'm glad to see that we're recognizing, especially since May is Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, that we're taking the time to recognize that in the Glaolit and hope to encourage all residents to learn more about the different cultures that have mixed into our country and have enhanced our country from these different areas.
Thank you. And we, um, it is also, uh, mental awareness, mental health awareness month this month, so we are recognizing that.
We're doing the two separate motions, right?
Um, yes.
Okay, yeah, and, um, I'm glad to see that we're also recognizing that to help alleviate the stigma of mental health issues and encourage people to always be mindful of their mental health and get help when they need it. Since most of us need it at some point or another.
Thank you.
I have a comment, a question. So I know we've had several recognitions over the past several months, and I anticipate this will go forward over the next few months, and it's always been my position that to have these recognitions should be connected with some activity or some notice, and that we're not just recognizing at every meeting some federal pub, public, state recognition without it meaning more than just paperwork. So while I'll vote for these tonight, I do wanna just restate my concern that we can't just jump on the bad wagon and then forget about it, so it's gotta be something more meaningful. And that's just for the record, I, I find this, you know, we're, we do this all the time and I think it should mean more than just saying it, so maybe like recommending books at the library or um, mental health, there's a lot of NAMI stuff going on, they're having their National Association of Mental Illness, NAMI, whatever it's, that's what it's called. Um, you know, recognizing that they're doing their monthly walk this month, so contributing to that in some manner. I just think we should be less paper focused and more action focused on these kinds of recommendations, so.
I agree with you. I think that, um, I certainly learn things better when I have an experience connected to something rather than just
About.
words.
Yes, yes.
Much as I love words. Okay, would you like to make motions on those two items?
Uh, just to follow up on Ingleboro's comments, I, someone else might know better than me, but I thought I had seen something about the Randall Library having a section on Asian American Pacific Islander history.
There may have, you know, but we should then support that more discreetly.
So, we should, yes, no, I agree, definitely.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But, and thanks for mentioning NAMI, uh, but I'll make the motion. I move to recognize the month of May twenty twenty three as Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month for the town of Stowe.
Second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of that recognition?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
I move to recognize the month of May twenty twenty three as Mental Health Awareness Month for the town of Stowe.
Second. And any further discussion of that?
Just one comment on that, similar to what we've done for cancer awareness. Uh, we might in the future consider the walk that we have done.
So may I comment? Um, so I just wanna clarify, these are not put forward by the town's diversity group. Uh, so in the town, when we, as an employee group, put things forward, and we have events, and this was Hector had asked these to be on the agenda, so during the month of May and April, we have no capacity to plan additional things, so, um, if you guys wanna plan something, I'd be more than happy to publicize it, but this did not come from us to put that forward.
Okay, um, did you have, JT, were you saying something about the, um, did you have a further comment on the middle?
Um, no, I, just possible suggestion, and if this board wanted to pick up on it or something, in the future, we might consider doing some of that stuff.
We could have a mini NAMI walk in Stowe.
Yeah. That's a mouthful, mini NAMI. I'm sorry, did you already make the motion?
Yes, I was like, I was like
All those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that's unanimous. Um, next we have appointments of a number of inspectors and other positions in town. Um, so first we have the appointment of, um, our building commissioner. What to see, a yearly, um, reappointment of the contract. So, um, I'm ready for a motion on that.
I move to reappoint Francis Ronan Spotum to the position of building commissioner for a one-year term ending May thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. And, um, then we have, um, our, our local inspector and, um, wiring and gas inspectors. Ready for a motion?
I move to reappoint the following inspectors for one-year terms ending May thirty first, twenty twenty four. Local Inspector Douglas Hyde, Inspector of Wires, Robert W. Norton, Deputy Inspector of Wires, Dennis Montiro, Deputy Inspector of Wires, Michael A. Norton, Plumbing and Gas Inspector, Adam Solberg, Deputy Plumbing and Gas Inspector, Robert Smith.
Second. Any further discussion of those? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. And so we have, um, sorry, yeah, we have a, um, a request for a permit from the Recreation
Nope, you skipped.
Sorry. Got it. Don't wanna forget the forest warden. So, uh, we have a reappointment of the forest warden, um, Chief Benoit. Uh, Chief, you're, you're here, do you have anything you'd like to say about that? Thanks for coming.
No problem at all, it's, uh, uh, no, I was just sitting in the meeting to meet the new, uh, board and, um, continue with my job.
Thank you. Didn't mean to put you on the spot. Okay, I'll take a motion for the chief's reappointment as, as warden.
I move to reappoint Fire Chief John Paul Benoit to the position of forest warden for a one-year term ending May thirty one, twenty twenty four.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you, Chief, is he still there?
Hope you get a cool house.
Thank you.
Now we have the permit for, um, the Recreation Department's boating program. Every year we, the, we have this permit for, um, the Camp Stowe to, to, um, have boats for part of its program and also to rent them when they are not in session. And, um, this is recommended by the Lake Boone Commission. So I'm ready for a motion.
On the recommendation of the Lake Boone Commission, I move to grant a commercial use permit to the Stowe Recreation Department for its boating program, program for Camp Stowe and the town beach for the twenty twenty three season, valid through December thirty first, twenty twenty three.
Second. Any further discussion?
So people can just go and rent a kayak or a canoe, I never knew that.
Yep.
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Never knew we had that program.
Have not done it.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. Any further comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. And, um, so, uh, now we get to debrief about the annual town meeting. Do you have any, sorry?
I was just gonna say it's not a lot of room.
Um, no, he wasn't sure if he was gonna make it or not. We will schedule a more formal one with the moderator and deputy moderator and assistant moderators. Uh, this was really for the board, if you had anything you wanted to debrief about.
Okay.
Or comments or anything.
Very short, sweetened, to the point.
I thought it was actually to the point, I, I do think it was to the point, it was not short.
No.
But it was to the point, I thought it was handled very well, and comments, everyone had an opportunity to provide comment and a response comment, and it was managed, and it was, you know, people had, were pro and con various things, and I thought the discussion was, you know, good. It was, so I thought it, overall, besides the fact that we were all hangry there at the end, I thought it went fine, but I don't know if anyone else has other observations about it.
For the record, I wasn't there, uh
Oh, you had COVID.
Was unable to attend such
I forgot.
I was actually disappointed.
Oh, boy.
At least at the beginning. So we don't, we don't particularly think there's any reason why it was a long meeting, except that we had a lot to do.
We had sixty-eight articles.
We had a lot to do.
Yeah. I did, I did bump into the moderator and, and mentioned him that I thought lunch would be great, if, you know, having a break for people somehow, or having a mechanism to, to just not go on.
No food or drink allowed, boom.
That's right. Well, that's, it's a tradition.
Except we had candy in front of everybody, it was like, oh my god.
Well, I would be in favor of some way of, of, I'm sure we'll talk about it more in a formal meeting with, with the moderator and so forth, as he said.
Oh, yes. It was not gonna be at this meeting, so
No, I understand, yeah.
I didn't mean, I meant it's not gonna be a select board meeting. So if you all wanna be included, I can include you when we post that, but, or not post that, cuz it wouldn't be a posted meeting, but
I don't know that we, do we all care to weigh in on that?
And Megan had her hand raised.
Yeah. Beg your pardon.
It's okay.
Getting used to this tennis match.
When you get in this seat, you'll be able to see me. Um, I wanna say, uh, one thing that I think worked really well, and I would urge us to continue to do is to, um, to think about the things that we can be proactively presenting at the top of the meeting. Not that I thought that Denise's salary would be contentious on the floor, but it was helpful to be able to stand up and kind of give our reasoning to show that it was like a well-thought-out thing. And when the finance committee came up and sort of, I don't wanna say cherry picked, but we, we, we knew that there were going to be things that were questioned in certain sections of the budget, and so I think it was, it was helpful to sort of be able to say, no, 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 like this is, if you haven't attended a finance committee meeting and seen like the full presentation at a select board meeting, then these are, you know, the things, so. I would, I would just suggest that we continue to do that maybe, when things come up on the budget that there's questions about, but I felt like it went really well, um, I do feel like this particular moderator really kind of had it. You know, it was, it was just, it, it was a long meeting, but I didn't feel like we were treading into kind of a very lengthy territory, um, so I appreciated the work that he did and that everybody did putting it on. And I will say, the clickers were tested, I happened to be at Hale stopping by when they were, then when there were volunteers there testing all of it, so you're right, to have two hundred people in there is really the variable that you don't know about, but it was, there was a lot of hard work behind the scenes that went into it, so, that's all I have to say.
It's a big production, and I think it's, it's not easy to, to do, and that's why I think it's another reason to do it on, on one night.
Is this the executive session?
No.
No?
Oh, public invited?
Yes.
Are we gonna have time to get ice cream?
Probably.
Yeah, it depends where you go.
Rest.
Okay, you can sit, enjoy yourself.
Okay. You wanna see if Denise has anything to say?
Yes, thank you.
Um, so I would say, I think, so we did with the new, um, moderator and deputy moderator, changed things up a little bit with the presentations. Um, I think it worked out well with the two schools. Um, and to, to hold the line items and the budget, just to have them give a presentation seemed like such a waste of everyone's time, so let's just give the presentations, and then if you have legitimate questions, hold. Uh, but I feel like, you know, stopping to give the presentation in the middle of that, uh, run, it went a little bit smoother having those presentations before the hold started. So there are a few things, um, you know, for those, for those of you all that were down front, um, you know, I don't know if you could see that we had a new clock, so as the speakers got up, the moderator would start that timer. And so we've implemented some things to really keep things on track and to try and keep the meeting moving, instead of just having sort of, I guess it holds when you don't really need a hold, or people talking much longer than their allotted time. And at the Stowe's meeting prior to, um, we might have talked about this, uh, Jim was great actually giving out times. He was like, okay, you get three minutes, and you get ten minutes, and you get five minutes, and, um, so it was very, it was very well organized as, because we had so many presentations, um, as to who would be presenting and for how long. I would say that is one of the criticisms we've heard, is that there were too many presentations. People didn't really feel that all the articles that had a presentation needed a presentation. Uh, but quite frankly, if someone's presenting, if someone's putting an article forth, they should have an opportunity to present it. Um, maybe it's a limited or a shorter time, but they, they should have an opportunity, but that was one of the criticisms that we did hear.
You have been a member of the public too, once you, once you're done. Hector?
I didn't understand one thing, and when we went through the first thirty items and, they were called out and people were given an opportunity to call a hold on particular items, so
The consent calendar of the budget?
Both.
Okay.
We did that process, and then when we got to the next move after the budget for the individual spend expenditures, why we couldn't have done the same thing of just call out which ones people wanted to hold and discuss and just discuss those and then vote for the rest of them.
So capital planning likes to do those all individually. I tried, that's why they're in one article now, because when I came here, I'd never seen us, people vote on individual capital items. It's usually, here's the plan, you vote on the plan. They did not like that, which is why they're all individual, individually numbered within the article, because they wanted to have a chance to discuss each individual item.
I don't know that that would have shortened the meeting any, but it seemed like it wouldn't. There were, it seemed like there were a few things there that nobody really needed to discuss, that you just voted, and it might have helped a little bit to be able to do that.
Yeah, they Those tend to be the bigger ticket, I, sorry, I didn't mean to
Yes, they are.
But those tend to be the bigger ticket items, and I think that they feel like they need to, I, I'm all for consolidating, but I do think that historically, that sort of has been what that committee does, and so I think they just wanna make sure that the taxpayers have a justification for the larger
Right, well, and we heard some feedback that folks wanted to add things into the consent calendar, like one of the residents said, well, why can't everything under ten thousand dollars just be added into the consent calendar? I said, well, that's not how it's traditionally worked, the consent calendar is the repetitive articles that we vote on every year, so you know, he's like, well, can't we just vote on that at the beginning of the meeting, what we want on the consent calendar? I said, well, again, it doesn't work that way, but, you know, if, if town meeting as a whole wanted to say, put everything under ten thousand in the consent calendar going forward, that's something we could look at, but then those, I said even the consent calendar items, they were held that were repetitive, that we've talked about every year, so
That we continue to talk about every year.
I think folks were trying to find ways to streamline it too, but this was, this was an extraordinary meeting with sixty-eight articles with about, you know, fifteen of them, fairly contentious, so.
Okay.
Well?
There is someone online, I think, that have it.
Yeah, Kate. Hi, Kate.
Hey, how's it going?
Good, thanks for coming to the meeting.
Evern West, Eight High Street in Stowe. Um, many of you know I'm one of the people, the legion of volunteers who work at both, uh, town meeting and the election. And this year, I just wanted to comment a little on the tech, since I was right in the middle of that, and I know it was concerning for some people, um, as both Megan and Denise mentioned, we did a huge amount of testing, and everything worked beautifully, both three weeks ahead of time, a day ahead of time. I think we've got some, or at least I have some ideas of maybe what went wrong that was causing the interference that didn't allow the people in the cafeteria to use their clickers, um, which will give us some ideas for the next time. We had kind of a late change we were adapting to about how we were setting it up. And I also just kinda wanna give a shout out to the moderator and the assistant moderator, who just were able to switch gears really quickly, cuz we were having a party in the cafeteria, we had our little green cards, everybody had their snacks, people wanted to have their lunch, like, it was actually kind of a great place, I was floating back and forth a lot, but it wound up being kind of a good hybrid. I don't think I would have planned for it, cuz it didn't amount for as much fluidity as we would have liked. 'cause it didn't amount for as much fluidity as we would have liked. Um, but I do think we learned a lot this time, um, you know, for the last three years, every time we've run town meeting, it's been different. We've been at center school outside and inside, we've been at Hale outside and inside, and now we're at Hale inside and inside. And every time we do that, we have to reconfigure. So I think every time we're learning more and they're working better every year. So hopefully we can eventually get everybody working on one clicker system um, and having all of those read, but shout out to the folks who found a way to make it work in the middle of a fast-paced meeting. That was it, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, nice comment. Um. Anything else on town meeting?
Okay.
All right, um, who has something to say about the minutes of May ninth?
Uh, nothing.
I thought the summary of the um, the anti-hate and anti-racism draft statements were really nice, those min- parts of the minutes were done as well as the uh, anti-Semitism.
Yep.
'Cause that was a long discussion, it was nicely uh, summarized.
I agree. Um. I'll take a motion on the minute.
I move to accept the meeting minutes of the May twenty ninth twenty twenty three meeting as drafted.
Second.
Uh, any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous, uh, not JT.
I have to abstain.
Okay, that's um, four, four and one abstention. Um. Correspondents, anybody have comments on correspondence?
I did have one question and I can't remember what it was.
Is it EverSource?
I think so.
Was it really?
Really?
Yeah, believe it or not, I actually tried to read it.
I was, too. Um.
May I ask a question of the board of correspondence? Um, so you'll see in there that there is the draft of the open space and recreation plan.
Uh.
Um, at any point, does the board wanna schedule time to discuss and provide comments? Do you intend to review that on your own and provide comments, if you have any? How would you like to handle that?
Um, sounds like we could have that as an agenda item.
At least we could identify or the priority parcels or the priority actions that we might recommend to the town.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Of the targeted ones.
Mm-hmm.
We'd been doing really well in town, so to just sort of prioritize other ones would be always, it's always a great idea.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's great.
Um. We have Kathy in.
Hmm?
Kathy coming in as well for that discussion?
Yeah, well, it, it depends if you wanna discuss the, the draft plan or if you wanna discuss it with the open space plan committee. Really depends what you wanna do. If you're discussing it amongst yourselves to put forward a priority list or to support the priority list, um, or if you wanna talk about how they put the draft together, that's up to the board.
I would feel comfortable with the two, between the two of you
Yeah.
feeling like we had enough to just have a discussion with ourselves.
Process, it's a state mandated process and.
Right.
So I'm
Okay.
I'm happy just looking at the parcels and
Sure.
weighing in, and so I guess we don't have to ask other?
No, I, I would, I mean, I'm speaking for myself, I would feel comfortable given the fact that the two of you have had extensive knowledge on that, to be able to bring that to the board to have a discussion about it, I don't think we need to do a joint meeting or anything.
No, I mean Kathy has been known to attend our meetings
Right.
and um, she's of course welcome, comments welcome, so.
Cool.
Um. Yeah, I mean, for me, that, that might kind of work into our um, our goals conversations that we'll have as well, so, so we can figure out
Mm-hmm.
how that would fit on, maybe go on the agenda adjacent or together depending
Mm-hmm.
what else, what other business we have. Um. Anything else in correspondence?
I was trying to understand what the letter from EverSource was all about, an N star.
Um.
Then why, what was it that they were notifying us of?
Um, they're making a change in their um
Really?
way they set up the um, how they charge the individuals. Um, and it looks like they are eliminating the EES um, the way it was structured, so now they're just doing a, looks like a standard uh, deduction um, for the individuals that meet the requirements under the low income residential customers. Um, in the past, it used to be they had a separate low-income EES, um, which they, but now what they're doing is they're just incorporating it into um, receiving um, a discount on their total electric bill.
But does this affect us at all since we have Hudson Light and Power?
Right.
Some people do.
Get our energy from the EverSource grid.
I see.
It comes in off that controversial line and goes into Hudson and then Hudson does the thing.
Okay. Um, so there so, so Hudson Light and Power's cost for our energy would, would be figured by EverSource's?
Potentially, I don't really know. But I think this is a state-approved process, is that correct? And so they're just notifying us.
I think it's just a notification letter.
Yeah.
I don't think it's anything that we, like, they, they ask for comments on a lot of, like, we'll get a lot of these that they're like asking for comments, but it's really like a cursory kind of.
It's a courtesy.
It's a courtesy, courtesy, not cursory, yes.
Yeah, it's a notice of filing.
Yep.
Um, and request for comments, um.
Well, you can send the comments to DPU, actually.
Yeah, right.
As part of the DPU process, approval process they need to have.
So is this something that we, well, again, we don't pay EverSource, we pay Hudson Light, so.
Well, there are a handful of customers in town that are on EverSource. So I assume that's why EverSource needs to notify us, because there are customers in Stowe that are not on HLP.
So did these c- customers get the same letter so they have an opportunity to comment?
Probably not.
No, I, I think this is, yeah, this is the um, this is.
Was it in the paper maybe?
Right, it's like when we post a public hearing.
Okay.
There are certain requirements, so I think they just have to file it with all the communities that um, are affected, which again, a very small portion of our town is, um, so I think for us, it's more just notification.
Okay.
Got it. Okay, um. Last call for, for correspondence?
Um, oh, sorry, I had one thing, I just wanted to say thank you again to Mr. Brower for um, for sending that letter and, and going through that whole process with us.
It was a great process, I really appreciated his um, presentation and
Yep.
tone and, and certainly the thank you letter, glad we did it.
Yeah, I look forward to hearing from him in January for the Holocaust memorial.
Yeah. Okay, last motion of the night.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Fastest meeting ever.
That's always the best, the first.